...begun some time ago, having to do with the commemorative Air Force. And it's to deal with the issue in terms of the potential opportunity we have right now if the City Commission chooses to apply for a grant, and that's the bottom line. The permission of the City Commission is being sought to apply for a grant application from Tech Dot that would help in what the CAF and the representatives here would propose to do. Let me take the opportunity to introduce to you several people who are here from the CAF. First of all, David Houston and Chris Houston and Tom De Los Santos, all of whom are with and are key people with the CAF. They also have their architect here who has been working on a presentation.
What's his name?
Mark Stewart.
Right.
Fox Stewart?
No, Mark.
Mark Stewart.
Right. They've been working on a presentation to you, but this will form, if you so choose, the nucleus of a grant application to be submitted through the MPO to Tech Dot for consideration. No further ado. Yeah. David?
Thank you very much for giving us a few minutes of your time this afternoon. As most people know, there are some problems at the airport, and we hope to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. As most of you know, the CAF has been there for almost 15 years now, and a number of things have happened since the building was constructed back in 1990. We have some problems at our existing facility, not the least of which is that the CAF museum has never been what you would consider a profit center for the airport or the city of Brownsville. The other problems that exist have to do with our location, the building condition itself, and airport development which is encroaching upon our existing facility. And if things continue, and we want them to continue because we want the airport to grow and develop, it will be impossible for us to continue doing Air Fiesta at our present location. This year, because of construction work adjacent to us, we were able to make use of the cargo facility on the other side of the field and had a very successful airshow as a result.
That's last year's or years past?
That is a picture from last year's airshow. We don't have all the pictures from this year done yet. Our solution is to relocate our facility to the north side of the airport on Highway Four, that is Boca Chica. Redesign the building and grounds with a retrospective look to capitalize on the historical significance of the Brownsville Airport and obtain funding via Tech Dot administered statewide transportation enhancement program with matching funds, 20% coming from private and public sources. In that way, we will be able to return the existing facility to the city and the airport for commercial leasing opportunities. It's been said there are three kinds of people in the world: those who make things happen, those who watch things happen, and those who wonder, "What happened?" The members of the RGV wing, all volunteers by the way, the Brownsville Barnstormers and the Air Fiesta team want to be known as those who make things happen. We know that the goals to which we aspire may seem to some unattainable, yet we are convinced that with the support of the Brownsville community, as witnessed by a shared vision and commitment to excellence, our dreams can and will become a reality. As Larry said, we've been working with an architect to come up with an idea of the kind of facility that we propose, so I'll turn it over to them and you can take a look at what we've come up with.
Thank you, David. My name is Tom Santos, and I'm the wing leader of the RGV wing of the CAF. The picture you see right now is last year's airshow. We don't have a crowd picture for this year's airshow, but every year, over 20,000 people come to see our airshow. The next slide, please. That is a map of the United States. We built this museum 15 years ago, like David said, and a couple of years ago, we decided to see where people come from to see our museum. This is a daily accumulation of counting of people. And everybody that comes into the museum, we let them have a pin and say, "Okay, pin your city, where you come from on the U.S. map." And they do that, and as you can see, it's quite full. And some people have said, "Well, I can't put a pin anymore because, you know, my city's full." So the next slide shows the map of the world. We have a lot of people from Europe come over, some from Russia, South America, Japan, China, Australia. And there are a lot of people that come to see our museum daily as we're open. A lot of people from Brownsville don't realize how popular this museum is, but there are a lot of travelers that actually travel just to see airport museums or airplane museums and that kind of thing. So the next slide, please. That is a picture, overhead view of the airport. Up at the upper left, right there, upper right, I mean, is the existing CAF site. North is down, south is up. The new site there that we have proposed is on Boca Chica Boulevard. There is, as you can see, there's no obstructions and we're pretty clear of all, you know, of the airport facilities.
Before where are you from? The fire station?
The fire station is just above that little road, if that little handrail is straight up. No, no, no. From the CAF site, straight, no, let's see. Go down a little?
That picture was taken before the fire station.
Yeah, the fire station, right above the C, at the CAF site.
To the north of the CAF's proposal.
Yeah, right, that little road right there, that is where the fire station is now.
Have you all had contact already with Lenny Perez as far as?
We have made, we've talked to the airport engineer and all our clearances. You'll see in another slide that we've already made those applications. So the next slide, please. That is the floor plan and some of the themes that we will have to make this site look like a World War II airport. If you'll go to the next slide, please. That is a 3D rendering of what it's going to look like. We'll have the Boca Chica there down at the bottom, a city park facility that we include in the, in our facility there to the immediate right, that parking lot. There's a city park right next to that, and there's a gate, quasi-gate facility, the building, to make it feel like a World War II airport. You'll have a parking lot, the administration building, with hopefully a rotating beacon on the top. We can maybe relocate the rotating beacon that is presently off the airport property itself. We'll have a large hangar and several smaller hangars within the facility. And the museum will be in that first building right there. We'll have the museum and administrative offices in that first building. And the next slide will show, we have, like I said, we have worked with the airport engineer, and we have gotten the clearances of everything that we have tried to fit this property, this plan that we're talking about. The architect and I and the airport engineer have gone through countless measures trying fitting this thing together, so we're clear of all the obstructions and, right, Mark?
Right. We got the side clearances, the coach clearances, we're clear of the towers, we're clear of our, perfect fit at that location.
That is, like I said, a perfect site for what we plan to do. And again, like David said, we are all volunteers, every one of us. We do this because it's in us. We want to succeed in what we're doing. We're very proud of our facility. We recently redid our museum, and it's all done by just private, you know, private sweat and blood and tears, our own money. We didn't go to the city for money for redoing our museum. The only time we've gone to the city is because the roof was leaking, and we had to have that repaired, and the contractor did come in early, early last, or late last year to fix.
What's the estimated price tag for this?
Around $5,000,000?
$5 million?
A little more, higher. $5 million, yes, sir.
And how much can we get from the state?
We're asking for four from the state.
Eighty percent.
Well, what's going to be the criteria determining factors?
How do you mean?
Well, in other words, what are we going to be, what are we going to be competing against when we go for this type of grant? Larry, are they going to be coming to us later on for a local match for them to get the money from the state?
I think what's your?
I didn't want to jump the gun there because I knew eventually you'd get to it on your presentation, but.
Right.
Our plan, our plan is to obtain a magic, public and privately raised funds.
For that million dollar match?
Short answer.
With regard to the competition, and this is a very competitive program, on the statewide level, there will be projects submitted from all over the state. This project does qualify. Aviation museums, for example, is definitely qualified for enhancement or step-type funding from Tech Dot, so we know that that is a potential. In terms of local competition, to our understanding, there are no more applications being submitted for this round of funding that would be submitted to Tech Dot this year.
When is the deadline for this round of funding?
The, it's, well, to Tech Dot, it is in April, but this application has to go to the next MPO meeting. That's why it was important to come before you all this evening, so there's enough time to put together all of the copies and so forth and get them to the Transportation Department so they can get to the MPO for the next meeting.
For our local MPO meeting?
That's correct. It has to be approved by the MPO as well as the City Commission as a sponsor in order to be submitted.
Does any of this have any type of impact in a negative form, the plans that we've got with regard to the runway extension, cargo terminals?
It's in the other end.
I know it's on the other side, but I also know that makes it closer to the Foreign Trade Zone and closer to where the air cargo was and is expected to be.
I understand just what you're talking about. There are three sites that are being looked at as potential sites, not for this facility, but for other facilities, and this project would not have an impact on those sites. In terms of runway extension, the runway extension is to the south, crossing California and so forth. I do not anticipate this impacting negatively on that.
And when's the timeframe to get a response on the application?
We will get a response from Tech Dot by the Highway Commission, probably within about four to five months. The time period for this will be, you will not see any kind of a contract from Tech Dot, assuming this is approved, for probably a year and a half.
Okay.
Mayor, one question, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Is there any kind of history on this funding being approved by Tech Dot? Has it happened other places?
Well, I can tell you what our experience is, for example.
I mean, for this type of, I know we haven't applied for this before, but in other places?
Yes. The Commemorative Air Force in Midland.
Right.
Applied for a grant under the same program.
Right.
And it was approved.
How long ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
What size grant was that in Midland?
Much larger, as I understand.
No, theirs was, I don't, I think it was three or four million, something like that. It was big.
And it was approved on an 80/20?
Yes.
Yeah. All the enhancement grants.
But we are committed in some, you know, in some way, shape, or fashion to come up with the 20%. That's the, if not us personally, but the, you know, public-private type.
Yeah, we plan to address that through private foundations, other types of getting, and public funds if we can get them. Also, I should point out that we have, we have the help and guidance from one of the members of the Tech Dot team up in Far. Why don't you tell them about Steve?
Well, first of all, Steve Walker has been very instrumental in assisting us and guiding us in terms of application preparation and so forth. As you recall, we've had a similar type project approved for a portion of the funding that did the streetscape project downtown. The sidewalks, the lights, trash receptacles, also one that is being worked right, well, the little shed that houses the historic engine over by the museum, that was another using this type of funding. Also, what we're working with in terms of the hike and bike trail, another example of the use of this type of funding.
Mayor, I have a comment real quick. I wanted to congratulate the CAF on staging a great airshow this year. But in the spirit of continued support and cooperative, continued cooperation between the city and the CAF, I believe it's important that the city receive a copy of your annual financial statement and an audit report as a part of our continued efforts that, to support the CAF's goal of pursuing history. So if you guys could maybe hand that over to Mr. Larry Brown so we could take a look at that, we'd appreciate that.
Are you looking for just the airshow or are you looking for the wing facility itself?
We don't get an audit.
You don't get an audit? I thought you all had, did.
The C, the Commemorative Air Force as a whole gets an audit of financial every year, and our numbers are included in that. But they, but we can, we'll be glad to give you our financial statement, it just won't be audited.
I know we brought some questions up, were brought up during our airport meeting today, Larry, so maybe you can, maybe I don't know what the airport advisory board's looking for.
What sort of a timeframe are you looking at for that? Because it's going to take us a little bit to put that.
What are we looking at, Larry, at?
Sixty days.
Sixty, yeah?
Sixty days.
Sooner if you can do it. Okay, any other questions?
Good luck.
All right. Thanks, thank you for bringing this to us, and we appreciate everything you've done for, for the airport and for CAF.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Commission. Before you, we have a workshop item on the current use for dwelling district. This ordinance has been in place since 1982, plus or minus, and what we're trying to do here is just to make you aware of, as far as what the uses that are allowed on the residential area, as we continue to grow as a community, we find it a little bit more difficult in being able to justify the permits without causing adverse effect on what the uses are allowed here. So what we're trying to do is planning to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission to see if they want to study this a little bit further as to do away with certain uses and keep only the ones that you see underlying on the projector. Like you see there, it's the one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, then you go down to number four, public park or playground, golf course, public recreation building, public museum, community building, that type of use that's user-friendly for a residential area. And basically, that's what we're trying to do here, just give you some notice as far as what we're going to be doing with the Planning and Zoning Department, and once they vote on it, bring it back to you.
Mr. President, I wanted to ask you, what is that, does that have anything to do with overlays? What does this do to overlays?
As far as overlay districts, some of the overlay districts may or may not apply to actual residential areas. An overlay district, let's say like the 051, which is a tourist corridor, not necessarily does it have to be residential, it can be commercial or a combination thereof. So, you know, I don't know if that answers your question on that, but we do have also a heritage overlay district here in the downtown area where you do have a lot of commercial and residential development. So basically, once again, what we're trying to do is just be a little bit more careful as to how we permit these other type of uses, you know, that you find right now in the dwelling district.
Thank you.
That's basically it. I don't know, if you want to have any other comment or questions that I can answer?
Are we acting on this today?
No, sir. Well, I'm sorry, we did put it on the, on the regular meeting, and I'm going to ask you that you table it so that we can take it before the Planning and Zoning Commission, before we do take any kind of action.
Okay.
If you can just do that for us.
Thank you, Suntay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suntay.
Thank you. You're up again, Suntay. What is this going to do? Everybody's.
I'll be right back. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Commission. We did get city ordinances from five different cities. It was McAllen, Laredo, Corpus Christi, San Antonio, and College Station. The categories, the categories on the monopoles that we have right now are permitted are the standard size, which you see in just southwest of the City Plaza Building, and they're the all, the standard size. The colocations currently, we do not enforce them. As you can see, there's a perfect example right there that there's one, there's two of them a block away from each other. One of them is 160 feet high, and the other one is about 100 feet. Also, if we force is the providers, there's the colocation and providers which we do not enforce right now. The high limit, they differ depending on the zoning of each tower that is particularly built on each area. In comparison to other cities, the difference is, the most restricted city in, here in the state of Texas, is College Station. That's the most restrictive city that municipality that, once a contractor goes in there to try to get his permit, you know, they go to a very stringent city ordinance. Proposed changes, number two. We could go by the height limitations by the zoning, which is, one of them is commercial D, which is high 100 feet, and it would prevent, or dwelling G. Right now, we basically permit towers on, if it's on a residential area, which is dwelling G, the high limit there is 24 feet, and we permit a tower could be anywhere between 100 to 135 feet. Okay? Separation between towers, we do not have that enforced. College Station, another, that same thing, they cannot permit, or they do not permit towers any closer than 1,500 feet, depending on the height. If it's lower than that, it has to be further separated from each other. Goals, pros and cons, appearances. What the city can do or permit is there's on your push, or your booklet that I just sent out there, is that there's a new, different models. One of the models is the flagpole, that's the most common one, and those are used in areas such as the gallery in Houston, Woodlands subdivision, Woodlands Mall in Houston. We only have two of them here in the city of Brownsville, and they're just northwest of the DPS building. Now, and then that certainly means that you can fly, you can fly a flag all the time, they're called flagpoles. We do have the option, or the city has the option, where we can fly the flag at all given times, or just fly the flag on certain holidays. Example, Memorial Day, Flag Day in June, Fourth of July, Veterans Day, or any other holiday that the city or the community has. One of the problems there is that if we do fly the flag at all given times, these different cities, they get complaints from citizens that it's the flag that is too big and makes a lot of noise. But what they do is they don't fly the flag on certain days or on weekends, and they remove it. Now, they only will take responsibility of that. Requirements. High limit permitted, we can go also with the max 135 feet here in Brownsville. The reason for that is because if we go higher, that tower is designed for four colocations. Colocations means that they can install four different antennas so they can provide more service to the new customers that are applying for the usage. Okay? Also, the separation of towers, we can also base it on that on the height. If we go even higher than that, I mean, they can be, lower than that, they can be, they need to be farther than that. There's also other designs besides the flagpole. There's also the, I don't know if I have it here, there's the palm tree appearance, and there's also the tree appearance. They use that a lot in the area of Houston, the palm tree. Let me give you an example there. They permit those 160 feet. The reason is 160 feet there is because the trees out there are a lot taller, there's taller buildings, so their high limit over there is 160 feet. Right here in this area, 135 feet would be just, according to the engineers, would be ideal because we don't have that trees that grow that high, and we don't have that buildings that are that high. Also, another recommendation that we can, or the city can do, is that we can go ahead and permit these towers on public buildings, like they do it in other cities, San Antonio or College Station. They can go in fire stations, in city property, parks, any public light base, anything, city property, they should come, or we should permit them before they even are permitted in other areas in town. You know, that's how the cities permit first, and then they start giving their options to see whether they're going to be permitted either way, it's in commercial or what area it is. And finally, they can request that to go before the Planning and Zoning Department to apply for a specific use, and within a subdivision where it could be, right now the city ordinance says that it can be 100 feet away from a residential or a subdivision. We can go ahead and also upgrade that depending on what, you know, the committee decides what to do. Whether it's could be higher than 100 feet, 200 feet. Another example, some cities have it anywhere between 100 feet, and they go up as high as 500 feet or 600 feet depending on the height of the tower. Okay? We do have an engineer from a certain company that is here in the audience, I don't know whether you have any questions for him, or you have any other questions, you know, or what I just, or in the last pages are this list that I'm off here, or the towers that are here in the city of Brownsville, that have been already permitted, their companies, their applicants, the addresses, the zoning, the height, the permit number, and the date when they were issued.
Just for clarification, this is a workshop item without any, any type of action to be taken. It's an FYI type of information, as far as what we have currently in the books, and a brief comparison of what other cities have on their ordinances when it comes to communication towers. And basically, what we're just trying to illustrate here is that, you know, Brownsville does have certain restrictions, and we have to go through a permitting procedure. Ultimately, they have to go through the Planning and Zoning Department once we receive a complete package with all the specifications, drawings, and so forth, and then we forward it to the Planning and Zoning Department where Mr. Medina takes it through the administrative review process. And he may or may not take it before the Planning and Zoning Commission as far as them voting on it. That's why, you know, we thought it a good idea to mention as far as other cities, what it is that they do when they review and permit the communication towers. And also, to give you a brief explanation as to why you have a certain height on the towers as far as the ability for different colocators to install themselves on those towers, where here locally, we have about 135-foot height restriction where you have the ability for four locators, colocators to install themselves versus if you go with a lower height, that eliminates the possibility of other people to install themselves on that tower or antenna. Therefore, the lower the tower, the more you may be seen because there's only the one or two colocators per tower. Okay, so like Mr. Gama says, we do have an engineer from a, from a company here that he may be able to answer technical questions that, you know, we're not able to if, you can come back? I mean, just so that you have a better idea as to what it is that this type of applications, what it is that we can look forward to as far as whether we take any direction in amending the current ordinance, or do we leave it as is.
Mayor, I had requested a lot of this information be brought to us simply because the district that I represent, we have a lot of these towers going up in a residential area. That was my main concern. These, you know, if Commissioner Arroyo lives in one house, and I live two houses down, and the middle property gets sold without us knowing, we've got 100 to 135-foot structure going right in between our homes, and we're not notified.
And that adds no value.
Exactly. And it's not helping us, it's not helping our citizens. That was my main concern and why I brought this up. Now, I'm glad that our engineer, Vince, is here, so, because I do have a couple of questions as far as, that he could answer. And, you know, we need, we need to take, with our citizens in mind, with the residents. You know, with towers going up within a residential area, that's, that's a big concern. That's something I know, you know, one expert could tell you, there's no problem. These towers can go up, and there will be no problem, no danger to you or your family versus the other side, the other, the other attorney could tell you, or the other expert could tell you, there is a danger. You know, it will affect you, it will affect your family. Now, what I wanted to direct to you, sir, was this: The city of Brownsville, within the next year, is going to be constructing four, 400-foot towers so that we may meet our wireless project that we're undertaking. By us building those structures, those 400-foot structures to accommodate our wireless system, will that affect your communication? Will that affect your structures? As far as your signals being?
Or will it alleviate? In other words, there won't be such a necessity?
Mr. Mayor, let me state my name real quick. Commissioners, my name is Vince Hevinger, consultant for Verizon Wireless. Questions on the RF engineering side, I believe that it would not affect anything at all. Mr. Mayor's point, anytime we have a vertical opportunity, that all the carriers involved will take that utmost in consideration. Priority number one is to try to co-locate wherever possible. In a lot of cases, when you have four competing carriers, which I've worked for all four of them, that doesn't always work, they're not always in the same area. What we have today is a huge challenge, because the industry has changed from mobile networks driving down the road, to trying to provide Joe customer in-building coverage. That means we have to get closer to residential, because they call us and say, we can't get coverage at our house anymore. So that's really the thing that we're dealing with. It would help any vertical opportunity, rooftops, anything, water tanks, and situations like that, always helps to be able to co-locate on. Mr. Gama has some very good points in his presentation, as far as any type of stealth, unipole, where you cannot see the antennas, for instance, like the one at Padilla's Line Road. We have an application to co-locate on that one right now. That helps. I mean, everybody outside this room would not know that's not a flagpole. Every community in Texas is struggling with the same thing, because we're, we're being bombarded by this high technology, email, internet, access, wireless communication. So, don't feel you're not alone, we've been in front of a lot of communities in this state. If I can answer any other questions, I think, I think you're on the right track in providing some kind of incentive for the carriers, be it height or stealth, to provide their customers better service in the city of Brownsville.
Senator, if you'll excuse me, I want to direct the staff. Santiago, aside from all the other work that I've already given you and Ervalisto on this, would you be able to communicate with the library, and ask them if there would be any problem, or with Gale, as far as the city being able to work with these companies, and let them co-locate on our towers? Will that be a problem? Will there be a problem with them doing that? Simply because my proposal is this, we have a huge problem with the height. If we were to allow some of these structures to meet the 135, or what they need, would they be willing to eliminate other structures if they're allowed to co-locate?
Well, that in itself, we would have to ask the applicants, as far as, some of them share the tower, others own the other towers that, where they're applying next to, you know, so it's a matter of asking them that question, you know, is it cost prohibitive as far as taking down one tower and erecting a 135-foot tower, that would eliminate the one, two, or three towers that are within the immediate area? You know, we can pursue that.
Because I'm assuming what they want is height.
Yes.
What's most important to them is the height, so they can get their signals, they get a clear signal.
Right.
Now, something that I want to propose to you, to take into consideration, for when you bring this back to action to us, is the following. Would we be able to put into the ordinance that towers that get built from now on, go with a more, the latest model that's out on the market, for example, the flagpoles, when they go up, versus the structures that we see now, within the city, that have, you know, the actual tower-looking effect to them?
Pedestals.
And if we can include in the language, now, I feel that as a city, you know, this is, this is the business to be in right now.
Right.
This is a booming business. We have had people come to the city, wanting to propose that they want to be, that they want to build on a city structure, they want to build on city property, but somewhere down the line, when we're getting ready to finalize, they disappear. And they end up coming back either through private, or some other kind of business, and they still erect their towers, and the city is being left out. Now, my proposal is that we include language in our ordinance, where the company first contact the city of Brownsville, and ask if we have any land that's available, meeting, of course, where they want to build a structure. If we have properties there, and if it is possible to use city property first. Next, if we do not have the land to where they need to build, I would move, or I would propose, that they go through a specific use with planning and zoning, as far as where they go, because in the past, and that's how I came to be involved in this, was that they were going to board of adjustments, it never got to P&amp;Z, residents never knew that these towers were being built. And all of a sudden, you know, long and behold, there comes this structure, your neighbor sold, the neighbor you never met, somebody who owned that vacant lot next to your property, sold a private business, and all of a sudden, here comes this tower, that you had no notice of. Now, when we go to planning and zoning, we have to notify within a 200-foot radius, and all of these people, and all of these people would know, and would have the opportunity to come before P&amp;Z, or have challenged the city commission, to voice their opinion on whether they should or should not want this structure within their immediate dwelling area. And when you alluded to, as far as how far, I would go as far as to say that I would, me personally, I would not want it within 500 foot of a residential structure, and at least a minimum of 1,500 feet between each tower, within our residential area. I don't want to affect these businesses, and I know that this is what we need, you know. When we were looking at numbers, you know that a third of our population lives within the southmost District 1, District 2 area. That is where we have a big congestion of people. Now, if I were to tell you that I have 60,000 residents within the southmost area, I'd say a good 30,000 of them own a cellphone.
Right.
And we do need to be conscious that they do need access to their telecommunications, to their, to their cellphones, but let's also remember that it's great for business, but yet, I don't want to hurt my neighbor by having one of these towers built right next to their home.
Exactly.
And that is a very big concern, and I would appreciate if you were to take this into concern, when you bring it back to action, so that we may better service the community, yet at the same time, help these companies. But I feel that the city of Brownsville has been cheated out of a good income that could be coming into the city, because we do have properties where we could hold these structures. And personally, I feel that we've been cheated out of an opportunity to be able to work with this.
Right. Well, the thing is, that's why we, we felt that the information we brought you here was, was going to kind of have that reaction, as far as the response and directedness to look into this a little bit further. As far as us getting together and creating language to where, you know, we have those type of procedures to where we have the applicant follow, you know, this procedure. You know, you're going to exhaust your means as far as applying with the city's properties, see if it's within the area, the search ring that they require to service whatever need that they have there, and have that documented through a professional engineer that will adhere his or her seal, that this is a legal document, you know, I'm stating nothing but the fact here, and, you know, I can't say otherwise.
When you mentioned that, I would appreciate that if you would take into consideration when asking an engineer, that, like you just said, hold them to a sealed document.
Right, yes.
Because he said, she said, will not cut it sometimes. And I would rather have an engineer set his seal, and say, this is my word, and I'm binding by it, and I'm willing to say, you know, like I'm a teacher, and I'm willing to say, you know, I put my certificate on the line.
Right, yes, sir.
To guarantee that this is what you're going to get. I would appreciate if an engineer would tell us, these are my findings, here's my seal telling you, you know, making it a legal document, binding...
Binding document, yes.
That opinion.
Yeah, because otherwise, if they don't document, you know, and they stray from the truth, they can be held accountable, and they can jeopardize their license, you know, so that's, that is one means of verifying, you know, what is actually being found, as far as the research they did, and what it is that they're stating in that document. You know, so-and-so license number, so-and-so, I am stating that we have exhausted all our means, and this is exactly what we need, because of the demand, or whatever the case might be. And then take it there from one step at a time, as far as, you know, following the procedure, so that if ultimately, we do have the language to where the towers do have to go through the specific use procedure, we do have the ability to have a public notice, you know, whereas previously, we only had to advertise it on the newspaper, and the actual neighbors of that property found out after the fact.
With the four structures that are immediately around where I live, there are four structures within a couple of blocks. And when I went and spoke to the people that live around these towers, and asked them if they had ever been notified that these towers were going to go up, not one single person was able to tell me that they were notified.
Right.
These people were never notified that this structure was going to go up, and all of a sudden, there you have it.
So you're saying, Mr. Navarro, that the language has always been, that they don't have to notify the people if it's right next door to them, or a few blocks, a few homes down?
Well, it was the case.
It's been in the paper.
That was the case, where we just had to notify them through the newspaper, but then with the new ordinance, you know, it takes them through the process, as far as, once again, us receiving a complete packet, and we forward that to the Planning and Zoning Department, where they're going to decide whether or not to take it through the Planning and Zoning Commission for review.
Yeah. Well, I agree with Commissioner Navarro.
I agree with that, that's the way it should be done.
We do not have that document, that, you know, that worded in there.
And that in itself, excuse me, that in itself, as far as creating the language, we can definitely include there any kind of projects that the city may have in the immediate future and beyond, as far as the city's needs for, in this instance, the wireless project, you know.
Ben, I'm sorry. And I would appreciate that if it did go to your department, and it does get there, that this does go to P&amp;Z, that it not be something that gets decided in-house. Let the people come before the P&amp;Z Commission, or before the City Commission, to know about this, not just that it got taken care of in-house at the office, oh yes, you meet the requirements. No. Let, let it be brought to P&amp;Z, so that it can be advertised, and that it can be spoken within a session, and people can have the opportunity to voice their opinion on these towers.
Okay. Any other questions that you may have? Okay, we'll bring it back again in a workshop form, before we ask for any kind of action, that way we can update you on our findings.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Good afternoon. This time, we'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to ask some very special individuals with us. Fabian Grimaldo, fourth grader, from PAC 251, and Rodolfo Moreno, also fourth grade, PAC 251, that are going to lead us in the US pledge and the Texas pledge. Everybody, please stand.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag, I am United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one and indivisible.
Good job. And leading us in the invocation this evening is Pastor Esperanza Muñoz from Temple Evangelico. Muchisimas gracias. Thank you. We have two proclamations this evening. Who is here from the National Colorectal Cancer Awareness?
This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating March 2006 as National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in our city. Whereas this year, more than 146,290 American men and women will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer, and over 52,290 will die from the disease, and over this total, 9,270 men and women were diagnosed in Texas. And whereas despite its high incidence, colorectal cancer is one of the most detectable, and found early, most treatable forms of cancer. And whereas over 90% of those diagnosed, while the cancer is still localized, survive more than five years. And whereas only 37% of colorectal cancers are yet detected while still localized. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the city of Brownsville, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby designate March 2006 as National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, during this 21st day of March, signed by the mayor and the city commissioners. Ms. Castillo, if you'd like to say a few words. Thank you very much.
With us this evening is Ms. Castillo, from the UTMB University of Texas Medical Branch.
I just wanted to urge all of you, colon cancer is very preventive, getting screened, they do recommend that you get screened starting at the age of 50. Unless there's a family history, or you're having symptoms, then of course, you go earlier. Colon cancer is caused by polyps that grow on the lining of our large colon, and at the same time, you have the colonoscopy exam done, they find the polyps, they remove them at the same time. It's not like you're going to go get an exam, and then later on, go for the procedure. So, I urge everybody, you know, to get screened, and if you need additional information, we can be reached there at our office. Our clinic is in McAllen.
Well, hopefully soon, we'll get you down here also. Well, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, as we see so many health issues, this is another one that many people probably don't pay enough close attention to, so thank you for bringing this to our, to our attention. And speaking of the medical profession, we are very fortunate to honor somebody very special to our community this afternoon. I'd like to please ask Dr. Azim Samir to please step forward for a very special proclamation from Commissioner Godliss and the City Commission. Everybody, you can bring everybody that's with you, doctor. Nobody wants to stand up with you? Come on.
Come on, Hopey. Benny? Angie?
(speaking Spanish)
Do you want to get in the middle? Turn around, face the camera. All right. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Azim Samir, MDFAAP. Whereas, a native of Pakistan, Dr. Azim Samir has been a practicing physician since 1994, completing his medical training at Driscoll's Children's Hospital in Corpus Christi in 1996, and came to Brownsville shortly after that. And whereas, intending to return to Corpus Christi after fulfilling the requirements of his medical visa, Dr. Azim Samir instead recognized the health needs of the children of Brownsville, and was determined to make this his lifelong goal, the care and treatment of these children. And whereas, board certified in pediatrics, Dr. Azim Samir has served as chief of pediatrics at Valley Baptist Hospital, Brownsville, from 2000 to the present time, and chief of pediatrics at Valley Regional Hospital from 2002 to 2005, and also serves as assistant professor at the University of Texas Health Science Center at San Antonio, and is on the teaching faculty of Driscoll's Children's Hospital, and the University of Texas Pan-American Nursing Program, and is currently the chief of staff at Valley Baptist Medical Center, Brownsville. And whereas, Dr. Azim Samir has served, has well-served the local community by sponsoring financially and educationally various schools, including elementary, high schools, children's heritage programs, and local charity organizations, and was selected, selected by Monica... financially and educationally various schools, including elementary, high schools, children's heritage programs, and local charity organizations, and was selected, selected by Monica's and Maggie's House as Advocate of the Year for the Child Abuse Task Force. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby recognize Asim Zamir, M.D., F.A.A.P. for his dedication to the health care of our community's youth and for the many, many good works that have come from that dedication, done on this 21st day of March 2006, signed by the Mayor Eddie Trevino Jr. and this City Commission. Congratulations, doctor.[611.16][611.16](Applause). Before you make a few comments, doctor, I just want to let everyone know that I worked at Brownsville Medical Center as a respiratory therapist when he first came down, and, and I saw him working with those children in pediatrics, and we worked side-by-side, many critical cases, and the passion that you've shown and the compassion that you've shown towards the children is unbelievable. I congratulate you on, on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Respected mayor and, and respected commissioners, I'm very honored to be here and be, be prided by you for something which I really love to do. I thank you very much. What my vision, when I came to Brownsville, is to live here two years and, and go back to Corpus Christi, and everybody wants to be in a bigger city, but when I saw the need of this city and especially the children's population, which is the biggest in the South Texas, down from Corpus Christi, it was a tremendous need, and at that point, I decided to stay here in Brownsville and become Brownsvilleian, in which I am very proud today. My vision for the future, and I want the people to know, is to bring a children's hospital in Brownsville, and we're working on the project, and within the very near future, you will see an independent children's hospital as competing with McAllen. I, I thank you again for the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Zamir.[727.82][727.82](Applause). All right, item two.
Item two, presentation, delinquent ad valorem tax collections.
I'm referring to Mr. Enrique Peña, Mayor of Lamborghini, Bay of Sampson.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Enrique Peña. I'm the attorney in charge of the delinquent tax collection from down here in Brownsville. What I presented today is, it's a five-month report, starting the fiscal year, your fiscal year starting October 1st through now, through February. I'm just going to run through where we stand right now. We continue, we continue our mailing program every month, mailing statements to all the delinquent taxpayers out there. That runs around, we mail out around 4,000 letters a month. We do around, we do property inspections. We've done 231 property inspections the first five months of the year, seeking to collect $374,000. These are home visits that we do, targeting each individual taxpayer, dropping off the notices, trying to start communications with them to get them to my office to make tax payments or arrangements. In the first five months, as far as litigations, we filed 89 lawsuits seeking to collect $145,000. We took 10 judgments for $48,000. We have trial ready, that is, 18 cases ready to take judgment for $95,000, and we have pending petitions of 123 cases, seeking to collect $307,000. As far as collections, we're up 3.79% from the prior year. That's the highest percentage collection we have for the last five years. As of the end of February, we collected $923,968. So we're doing well in that area. In the fall, we attempted to sell six properties. We sold two, we pulled two prior to sale because the owners came in and made payment agreements, and we had to strike two off. There was no bids made on them, and they were stricken off to the city to hold and trust, and we're going to resell those in the summer if we can. If not, I'm working with Mr. Medina from the planning department to, for the city to repurchase those, to put them in a redevelopment, urban redevelopment project that you guys have pending. So for the rest of the fiscal year, we're going to bring, we're going to file another 75 lawsuits, we're going to continue our collection program, try to bring another close to 30 to 40 lawsuits to judgment, and the, and my number one project is to work with Mr. Medina, because he has a list around 102 properties that we want to bring into litigation for that redevelopment program, and we're going to bring suits on those properties. If we can bring suits, then try to get the city to buy them outright from the people. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Peña.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Item three.
Item three, consent agenda items A through H.
Who did approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item four.
Item four, consideration and action to appoint two members to the Airport Advisory Board.
Larry?
I believe the commission has received a list of potential appointees for your consideration.
We are going to be making two appointments, correct?
Right.
All right. And we did not hear back from the mayor yet, right?
That's correct.
Well, I, I do understand that the, where are we here? Where the Sheraton? Is it Steve Meadows? He's the current VP at Posados Hotel Sheraton in Holiday Inn. Is that who you're talking about? And he's also the CVB Authority Chairman?
That's one, right.
That's one?
Right.
And Laura Gomez, I think.
And then Dr. Tara Rios also, and she also sits on the City Commission out there.
Correct.
Okay, I, I think that those would be two individuals, and I would so move to appoint them to the Airport Authority.
Second.
All right. We have a second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So Mr. Meadows and the, Dr. Rios.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number five, consideration and action to appoint two members to the Transit Advisory Committee.
Norma Samora couldn't be here. She was ill. My name is Rodney Gomez. I'm the Assistant Director. I believe Commissioner Longoria was going to suggest a appointee to our Transit Advisory Committee.
I had a gentleman that was interested, have not been able to locate him, and at this time, if anybody on the City Commission has somebody, I'm sorry, I have not had somebody right now, if you have somebody and would like to nominate them, I'll, I'd be willing to.
Like I mentioned earlier, that's Commissioner Longoria's. I think I'd like to allow that, and then Commissioner Bennecourt will allow that once it remains open until after the election, so, if that's all right. Why don't, how about, instead of you calling us, we'll call you?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item six.
I tell you what, I'm sorry, we better.
Table, move the table.
Second.
Move the table by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item six, consideration and action to appoint three members to the Graffiti Advisory Committee.
Mayor, it's been brought to my attention that we haven't completed those names yet, and we don't have them as of yet, so.
I do have one.
You got one?
Marcus Barza.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez from Marcus Barza, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I, I did not get the phone call back on, on that one either myself, so. And the other one was, we're leaving that open?
For the vacancy.
Okay, all right. I promise, Commissioner, at the next meeting, I'll have a name for you.
Not a problem.
All right. We'll table the remaining two appointments.
I'll move the table then.
Motion by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint four members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm not here for any money tonight.
I was going to say, you got a coat on, Skip.
Springtime.
And a tie.
I currently have four positions that are coming open in April and May, and three out of the four have wished to stay on the park board, and they are Alfredo Garcia, Garcia, sorry. It's been a long day, windy out there at that 511. Nora Hinahosa and John Patriaka, and Selena Cruz, as she's been so busy lately that she really doesn't have time for the park board anymore.
Skip, just a point of clarification, Nora Hinahosa was my appointment, not Commissioner Hernandez Hernandez.
All right.
And I would move to re-nominate Nora Hinahosa for the Parks Board.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, I reappoint Alfredo Garcia to the.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to reappoint John Patriaka.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That'll leave one vacancy.
And Commissioner Gonzalez had appointed her.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, but we'll, we'll leave that one vacant.
I thought, I really thought you would have.
I thought I had two, but maybe at the second time, he, maybe he nominated her. But I've already, I've already made two appointments, so if nobody else has a name, then we'll either bring it up at the next meeting or maybe till the next commissioner gets on.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Skip. We'll table the remaining appointment.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight.
Item number eight, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2006 dash 200235 point 68, amending chapter 348, zoning of the code ordinances of the City of Brownsville, Article 4, Use Districts, Division 2, Dwelling Use District D.
Good evening. Like we mentioned in the workshop, Mayor and the members of the City Commission, we can just table this so we can take it before the Planning and Zoning Commission to ask for their recommendation on that first.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, who, who made the motion?
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. The table, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item nine.
Item number nine, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235 dash 2006 dash 006 dash S to allow a professional office specific use in a professional office use district for .384 acres out of blocks 42 and 43 out of El Jardín subdivision, near Old Port Isabel Road and Dolores Avenue.
Item of Mayor and City Commission, this is a property, this is a property here shaded in, in green and with the hash marks. The, the Plan and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this recommendation to you. It's a specific use for professional offices.
This is a public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Roy, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
To approve.
Action, motion to approve by Commissioner Roy.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item number 10, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235 dash 2006 dash 007 dash S to allow a light commercial specific use auto detail and auto sales shop in a general retail use district for lot 6 of block 242 of Brownsville original town site, near East 7th Street and Ringo Streets.
Item of Mayor and City Commission, this is the area shaded in, in red. You can see it's on 7th Street at the intersection of 7th and Ringo, and then we, and then you have 6th Street here, this is 7th. As you can see, the blue area is the first commercial. It was downzoned in 1992 to a fourth commercial from an industrial classification that was back, put there back in the 30s. Since then, this, this area has been, has been downzoned all the way down to Levy, to the expressway, from 6th all the way down to 14th. This is a specific use for a car lot and detail shop. This is a site, was existing there. It was a used car lot previously. It's the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve, approval to this commission.
All right. I, I think that there's some people here on this particular item. Okay, before I give you a chance to speak, I'd like to hear from the applicant, let him have an opportunity to, to discuss what the, the plan is here. If there's somebody here. If not?
Yeah, Tony.
Oh, okay. Mr. Flores, didn't recognize you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Mr. Mike De Los Santos, the owner of the property, had a tenant who moved out, a used car lot business there, and he contacted me, advised me that he wanted to continue with business there at his location to keep the downtown area thriving, and I spoke with Mr. Baldomero Trevino, Mr. B.'s car lot, and he kind of getting it together to kind of like keep something going there at that current location. It already has an existing drain, and we're, you know, trying to get it worked up a little bit to make it more presentable and.
Mr. Flores, are you going to be selling automobiles and detailing, or what is it specifically that you're going to be doing?
Mr. Trevino is going to be taking care of the auto sales, and myself are going to be, and another partner are going to be taking care of the auto detail.
All out of that same facility?
Correct.
Is there a garage? I can't recall.
The, the right part of that existing building there, it has a drain already, and it has a drain there for the, all the water to go out.
That's an open, that's an open garage?
That's correct.
I mean, you can, okay.
I have concerns, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have concerns with the auto detailing. If planning and zoning approved the used parking, the used sales, well, there's not a lot we can do about that. However, to enhance this property and add another business joining it, and the business being auto detailing, I just feel like that's just totally the wrong environment.
They approved all of it. It was, it was all approved.
The car sales, that was already there, right? That business.
Correct. It's already an existing, it's already zoned for it.
As I understand, the specific use was because you want to add the detail.
Correct.
Not because of the car sales.
It's already, I believe, grandfathered for an existing car lot, and we just wanted to extend that little, that other section, the, the right part of that business to, to include that.
Well, I have concerns, so I'll listen at the public hearing to everyone else.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, if anybody's.
Mr. Flores, I'm sorry, Mayor, I have one question.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Flores. Don't go too far.
Not even a block away, I believe. There was a, a, a auto detail there. There's a structure that's still there. Are you all in, are you all aware of, of those owners, that there is one currently standing there?
I'm aware of it. It's an abandoned self-service.
Yeah, that's right.
Car wash. It's abandoned. It's been sitting there.
But you all have no, no ties to that or ties to the owner?
None whatsoever.
All right. Well, I do share the, I do share the concern of considering that this is a overlay, correct? And although the, the, the used car dealership is, is grandfathered in and, you know, may be appropriate or not, the auto detail, I do have, I do have a problem going back and saying, well, you know, going back to a specific use. But again, you know, understanding that not even a block away, there is still an option to use auto detail. I don't even know that's something that you all have maybe looked at.
Wouldn't that be the same problem right there, Ben? They'd run into the same.
And they're already there. But that's grandfathered in.
Let me correct a little bit. They still have to apply for the grandfathering through the Board of Adjustment. What, what the applicant was doing here was that they were applying for zoning, there are fourth commercial, a car wash, I mean, an auto sales car wash needs a sixth commercial. So them getting the zoning would, in the future, would have the zoning for a car lot. In this particular case, they, they could go to the Board of Adjustment and get a grandfathering because they had prior to 1992, a car lot there. So they, they could, you know, they have jurisdiction, the Board of Adjustment has jurisdiction, either to or not to award a, a variance for the car lot.
So then our vote tonight, then, can be superseded by Board of Adjustments? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, well, that would be a, a legal question, but, but if you voted for tonight.
Not for this area.
But, but, but what the applicant was trying to do, by my understanding, was that he was trying to get the proper zoning to always have a car lot there. The car lot and, and the detail shop require the same type of zoning.
Now. Hold on, hold on a second. So the car lot and the detail require the same zoning?
Right.
So if the, if the car lot already has a proper zoning.
Well, they don't. They have a fourth commercial. They would, they would have.
They have to go to the Board of Judgments to get the grandfather. Once they get the grandfather, then they can do the business.
Have the car lot only.
At the current location.
Yes. And that's up to the Board of Judgment.
So in other words, previously, it had the right zoning. So in other words, previously it had the right zoning, the overlay...
Brought it down.
Brought it down, okay.
So that's why they're...
Just grandfathered in, so if they...
If they go through the proper...
And if they don't, if they, if they didn't wanna do the detail, he didn't have to go through this?
They, he didn't have to come here, but he could go to the Board of Adjustment.
Why, why would he have to go to anywhere if it was already? Even though the, even though the, the overlay brought it down, if it was in use as an auto, uh, sales shop, why would he have to do that?
Because it was closed.
I'm sorry?
It was closed, and he needs another certificate of occupancy?
It was closed?
Yes, it's closed today. It's, it's vacant. Uh, so that use is closed right now. So, so he needs to apply for another certificate of occupancy with the billing official.
That, that creates an issue?
When the overlay went in, was it closed?
With regard to the grandfather, the fact that it was closed?
So would he have...
When the overlay went in, was it closed?
No.
No, it was, it was an existing.
So then they're, they'll...
So why did he go to P&amp;Z? Why didn't he just go to Board of Adjustments?
Board of Adjustment will do it anyways.
Because I believe the applicant wanted to have the detail shop, and wanted to have the proper zoning.
But if there's only the same...
If I may, probably what's happening here is, he's grandfathered as far as the actual car, used car lot. He's bringing in another use, he's changing the use on the property, which triggers the, the new...
Okay, let's assume that, that he, he doesn't wanna do the detail. He does not have to, he did not have to come to us, or P&amp;Z, or Board of Adjustments to continue selling cars. That's what I'm trying to make clear, okay. Even though there's been closed, I'm sorry, Commissioner, even though it's been closed for, for two months or two years, he does not have to do anything other than go get a CO in order to keep selling cars?
No, as long as he's not closed more than six months, he's still under the, the grandfathering period.
Okay.
But we go back again to, if he were to just keep the used car lot, he would be grandfathered as long as he opens it within the six-month period. But he's bringing another use, which is the detail.
Are we within the six-month period right now? Okay, we are.
That I know of, yes. I, I, I don't think that they have been, uh, I need to check with the office, but, uh, it, it's one of those things where, uh, if, if the six months has already expired, then he, he does lose the, the grandfathering clause. I need to check with it.
Santiago, you're saying that he cannot, when you say car wash, so if, let's say they do sell cars there, they're still allowed to sell cars there?
Yes.
They cannot wash cars there for, that are gonna be sold?
You gotta wash them anyway.
Well, if, if, if it's, if it's the same owner, and it's an accessory use, he should be able to do that, but if it's a different owner, business owner, he's bringing in an additional use to the, to the original one, that's...
Okay, Santiago, for argument's sake, bear with me here.
Yes.
Mr. B. Trevino is selling the cars.
Right, okay.
He's gotta wash his cars.
Yes, sir.
Like he does in all his other car lots.
Right.
Except he's making it into a business, except Tony Flores is making the business. So if I got Mr. B. Trevino coming to tell me, I'm gonna sell my cars, and I'm gonna wash them as an auto detail, is that okay?
Well, as long as the auto detail is strictly for the cars that Mr. B. is selling there. If he brings in public customers from the outside to detail them, he needs a, a separate certificate of occupancy, because it's not part of the original business. It's a separate business.
That's what they're bringing to us right now.
Yes, right.
Alright, who else is here to speak on this issue? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Flores.
Everybody else, if you could just line up in the back there, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commissioners' Courts, um, I know most of you people. That's the original Mike. My, my name is Mike De Los Santos. I started the business back in 1980. I don't see any point on this, 'cause car detail and car wash is the same thing. I, I don't see any, any logic. You still have to wash your car, so what's the difference?
But it's new businesses.
What's the difference? I mean, car detail, car wash, you still gotta wash your cars. So I don't see any problem here. Uh, let's get the place going. We, we need to get, get 7th Street back to life. And, and I'm, I'm very proud that they're trying to get in there and, and try to get 7th Street back to life. Uh, I invested somebody in there, we fixed it up, and we've been fixing it up real nice. And I'm very proud of him and Mr. B., and I just want my place to continue being a car lot. I'm very proud of my, of that location. That's all I have to say. I, I, I say, car detail and car wash go hand in hand. And we're trying to go, we're trying to go through to the Commissioners' Court, we're trying to do it the right way. And that's why we're here, to do it the right way. Look around Brownsville, there's a lot of car details, I don't know how they pop out. Where do they get, I don't think they come through here. And we're doing the proper thing, and I hope you people, or the Mayor and Commissioners, you know, look, look at what we're trying to do. We're trying to do something nice. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Okay, who's up? Mr. Farish?
Thank you. Mayor Trevino, Commissioners, my name's George Farish. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to borrow your ear for a few minutes this evening, uh, to talk about this item that's on the agenda. Uh, I'm coming here tonight as a representative of the New Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, which as I'm sure all of you know very well, is under construction right now, uh, right across the street from this location that we're talking about, uh, between 6th and 7th on Ringgold. The BCIC Board several years ago approved a $1.4 million cost share program to contribute to the enhancement of the cultural life of Brownsville, to bring this museum into being. In total, it's about a $3 million budget. Besides the BCIC Board, um, we have members of the community businesses, individuals, who are all in this together, looking out for the city of Brownsville, to try to boost the cultural life here in this district. Um, there are also other many players, besides the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art, who are here this evening, and I'm sure would like to borrow your ear as well. There are folks who have invested countless hours working on the Linear Park District, the Midicultural District across the street. The Dean Porter Park Group has invested over $14 million. Uh, there are millions and millions of dollars that are going into cultural programs to enhance this entire district. This is a very, very special part of Brownsville, between 6th and 7th Street. It is, uh, it, it shares many, uh, special buildings that have extreme significant, um, cultural value for the city, and so I think it's important that we pay extra special attention to anything that's proposed, uh, in this corridor. I know the city of Brownsville right now is under a progressive campaign to, to boost its image across the state and across the country. And adding icons like the Museum of Fine Arts is gonna be a wonderful asset for the city. And I'm coming here as a concerned board member and as a concerned resident about the complementarity of the aesthetics in that district. I, um, I think we all feel that it's important that the city look its best, dress its best, and, uh, in this district, that the architecture and the, the cultural investments that we make be in their top form. We do not feel that these types of businesses are complementary with the spirit of the vision that many hundreds of people in this community are investing in to try to create for the city of Brownsville. We talked about highest and best use and grandfathering. I know those issues are gonna come up, probably more this evening. But of course, as all you know, the history of Brownsville, the Pacific Union Railroad once ran right between 6th and 7th Street. Uh, it is no longer an industrial zone. Uh, we no longer have a railroad. It's a dynamic-changing environment, and I think a lot of people can speak to other specific projects that are being worked on right now to, uh, improve the culture of... So, uh, on behalf of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, I wanted to state for the record that, uh, we are highly concerned about this proposal that's on your action item. And although this is one business, and we are not anti-business, we are very much pro-business. In fact, many, many members who are on boards in this district are business members, uh, small business owners, members of the Chamber of Commerce. So we, we understand what it's like to, to own a small business. But at the same time, we want what's best for the city, uh, in terms of its image, and we do not feel that this is complementary with that vision. You can look at other museum districts and cultural districts throughout the state, from Houston, Museum of Fine Arts, and the Audrey Jones Beck District, the Manille Collection in Houston, the Fort Worth Museum District with the Amen Carter Center, the Bob Bullock Jones Center in Austin, Texas, McNay in San Antonio, the list goes on and on. And if you look at those districts, you will see that the cultural institutions that are in those districts that make them incredibly vibrant for those cities are complementary. That's why people go to those cities. They wanna participate in that culture, and it's, and it's highly concentrated, and it creates a wonderful dynamic, which I think the city of Brownsville wants to promote for this district. And, um, as time goes by, things change, things evolve, and, um, we ask that you please consider this matter, um, with great thought, which I know you will, uh, so that we can move forward with that vision. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for receiving me tonight. My name is Carol DeMoss, I'm the Executive Director of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art. I, like, uh, Mr. Farish, want to echo what he said, and we're involved in a great ripple effect with the Midicultural District, the zoo, the Dean Porter Park. There's so many things, so many cultural institutions that are taking over Brownsville. We have a real, real opportunity for tourism, for our children, for, for everything in the way of growth. All due respect to someone in their business, and we rely on business, we have sponsors, we're all part of the community, we all participate in businesses. I'm hoping the ripple effect will continue as cultural institutions continue to grow out from 6th and 7th Street. But that definitely is the main corridor where it all is starting. The other thing I'd like to say is, how long has the car wash been closed? It seems to me that it has been more than six months. And if that's an area of concern, I'd like to, to, to ask about that, so. I've submitted a letter, please take your time and read that, and those are our concerns. And I not only represent the Museum of Fine Art, but the Gladys Porter Zoo, the Midicultural District, and a lot of other organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. I am Rebecca Adelinas-McNair, and I represent the Midicultural District. We coincidentally had a meeting yesterday, and this issue came up, and we voted to, uh, be opposed to this special use permit. I also don't believe that that has been in operation for the last six months, because since the museum's been going, ongoing, that has not been ongoing. And, um, in 1992, the vision started to downgrade the area, because the change had occurred, the railroad tracks were leaving, the old South, Southern Pacific Depot was, was gonna become a museum. And back then, 14 years ago, they saw the opportunity to have a beautiful entrance into the city. You would get off at 6th and 7th, 6th Street, come in, there would be a park, there would be museums, there would be, now there's going to be a linear park. Uh, you would get to downtown, you could go to Elizabeth, you would be in the Central Historic District, you could go down to the Stillman House. It's, it's a perfect, beautiful opportunity that was seen 14 years ago, in 1992. Then it was, luckily, in, uh, 94, the Dean Porter Park Committee got together. Then that was a 10-year process, finished that. And in 98, um, the Middies, who gave $3 million to the Dean Porter Park project, we named, we named the area. In that area is, um, the federal government has spent a lot of taxpayers' money building a federal courthouse. In the same area is the $14 million of the Gladys Porter, of the Dean Porter Park. The Gladys Porter Zoo is the number-one attraction in Brownsville, and has millions of visitors a year. It is our number-one tourist attraction. When they leave and go back to the Expressway, I'm, Mr. De Los Santos is correct in saying that he, um, he has a great piece of property. He absolutely does. And it is very valuable now because of the investments made there. You need to consider what is highest and best use. It has not been open for months, it has been closed for months. It's a time to consider, you've had the, you've had the downzoning for 14 years, and, and now it's time to enforce the downzoning. It is that time. If you do not take that stand now, when will you do it? It, you have these opportunities, and you don't know when they might come again. The opportunity is there. You, when you work with small business people, and they made the office building there, you made sure that it was built in a historical context to, to look like it's part of old Brownsville, to look like it's historical. The, the art museum is also built in the same way, the buildings of the Dean Porter Park. Everyone has worked in this whole community to make it a beautiful entrance and exit out of the city, and make it very attractive for visitors. I had the opportunity this past week, it was spring break, the parking lots for Gladys Porter Zoo, both of them, at, at the school, at Cummings, and at Dean Porter Park were packed all week long. It, we had thousands and thousands and thousands of visitors to the zoo and the park, all week long, because it was spring break. It is our number-one tourist destination. You have to take that into consideration. It is a very valuable piece of property. I'm sure it ha- has another use. I know it would have to be, um, I know that you may not have, um, the opportunity now to prohibit the used car lot, although I think you do. But you do have the opportunity to make it any more use, any further special use. You need, you have it downgraded, you need to defend what has been downgraded, because it has changed. This, this whole area has changed. That lot is worth a lot of money, and it's worth a lot of money, because a lot of money has been invested in the adjoining areas. It, it is important that you think about what you want visitors to see when they come into town. What do they see? What vision of Brownsville do you want them to see when they come in? And what vision of Brownsville do you want them to see when they leave? And this is the number-one place that they will come to in the whole city. So I do ask you to consider that. The Dean, the Midicultural District includes the Dean Porter Park, the Gladys Porter Zoo, uh, Sombrero Festival, the Historic Brownsville Museum, the Art Museum, and the City Cemetery Committee, and, uh, even your public, uh, public, um, the Police and Fireman Museum is, is also a member, Sergeant Ruben Garcia is a member. So we, and we meet monthly, and, and we care very much that this area be considered the cultural district, and that you consider it a place that you want to make sure gets upgraded as much as possible. Thank you very much.
Santiago, go ahead, Tony. What, what I wanted to ask is, how we, how can we find out whether or not it's been closed for six months or not? Because if it, if it has, I think that's important. If it hasn't, that's important.
Uh, currently, Mayor, right now, the, uh, one of the, the surest ways would be to check the electrical meter as to when it was disconnected or, or turned down, you know, by the, the actual tenant.
What's the definition of being open or closed? I mean, the fact that they're not in operation, but they could still have the power on?
Well, uh, the, whether or not they have power on is, is...
That's a factor.
Is, is not pretty, it's not relevant, per se. Uh, the, the fact that the business was being conducted, uh, as far as a valid certificate of occupancy issued by the city of Brownsville to where the, the, the premises were allowed to operate for that particular use. Part of the burden is, is on the property owner or on the previous tenant, to where they say, okay, you know, I'm no longer in business, as of this date, I'm closing up. You know, we may be able to follow up with the state as far as, uh, whoever, TDLR, Texas Department of Licensing Regulation, as far as them overseeing the auto, used auto car lot there.
I know, I see that for six months, if he does not have a certificate of occupancy issued by the city, but the owner still retains the property. If I didn't have a tenant for six months, I still own this property, I'm still paying taxes...
Right.
On this property.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, as, if I were to be this business owner, I would seem to wanna challenge that, simply because I am paying taxes on it, therefore it is still my property. That I do not have a certificate of occupancy is something that I would challenge.
Well, the, the ordinance does state that, uh, if there is a valid certificate of occupancy and the premises are, are, are open for business, there's actual business operation there during any period of time that...
It's an "and," it's not an "or." Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Flores?
Right, exactly.
I'd just like to comment that, uh, when the previous tenant vacated the premises...
I'd just like to comment that when the previous tenant vacated the premises, Mr. De Los Santos did obtain a building permit, a remodeling permit. And that's currently what he's doing at this time, under his permit that he has. Since the last tenant moved out, he has been upgrading it, he has repainted it, and he has made some modifications, and is still doing that at this point. And that's probably one of the reasons why some of this time period that he hasn't had a tenant has also been, because he's remodeling the business as well.
Ben, is that a viable point?
Your question is, Commissioner, I'm sorry, viable for?
He has not had a certificate of occupancy, but he does have a permit from the city to be remodeling. Does that keep him within our guidelines, I do?
We go back to the actual business and operation. That's one of the reasons why we have the Board of Adjustments as far as the interpretation.
But you issued him a permit to remodel.
To remodel, yes. But was the property being used for that particular use at that time, as far as used car lot? You know, there are bigger businesses, bigger properties where, let's say, the mall, for example, they go through remodeling, construction and whatnot, and because of the size of the property, you know, a lot of the stores are open, saving except for the immediate area of the construction. This one, because of the size of the property and the remodeling, the owner may have decided to shut down completely, to keep people out of harm's way.
Reba? Again?
Anybody else?
Yes.
I did get the permit, because I was working on it, and I wanted to make it look nice. I'm sure most of you, you go through Seventh Street every day, and you've seen how I've been working on it, and how pretty it looks. And the only thing, like I said, I've been a grandfather, I've been there for a long time, and I've heard some of the comments that were made a few minutes ago. I don't see any pretty sites in that area. I don't see. I mean, I consider my little place nice compared to a lot of stuff in that area. So I don't see what you're talking about, because my place looks nice compared to other stuff. If you want pictures, I'll go around and I'll get you some pictures from Seventh Street. Look around, open your eyes and see. I don't know what, you know, my location is nice, and I think it's going to be a nice business. I don't have anything else to say, but I don't see any pretty local sites in there. Make a right, I mean, they're ugly locations.
Mayor, and Commissioner, I guess with this action item here, the applicant is basically requesting proper zoning, so he can operate a used car lot. And I guess if he does, he does have the right to go to the Board of Adjustment and petition the Board of Adjustment and plead to them the building process that he had to go through, and they may or may not issue that permit. But tonight, what he's requesting here is proper zoning to operate a used car lot.
You know, right down about a block or two, you've got an old, possibly abandoned car wash.
That's correct. And that car wash is definitely not grandfathered, because it's been closed for the last.
But we're not going to allow enhancement of that. We're not, you know, we're going to, a professional building or something, but not a car wash. You're just adding another, and I don't want to use the unsightly word negatively, but it would be so much nicer to have a professional building there, something more in tune with what's at linear park, misses across the street.
You know, this city commission is no stranger to having been a part of giving millions of dollars to these projects, to museums, to a lot of the enhancement that's gone on there. Now, mind you, the middies did donate $3 million. Mind you, I'm not going to say the city has put all the money into it. But time and time again, when we see these types of issues coming to this city commission, we are either being told by a beautification committee, a Midicultural Committee, a, any other committee, that this is what they want around the area. What about him? What about these guys that are trying to build? They're trying to make a little bit of money, they're trying to make a business. We keep holding them back because of things that have been set forth by our forefathers, if you want to call previous commissioners, and put into law. And we keep telling, meeting after meeting, putting restrictions on people all the time, because we have the committee come in and tell us, this is what we recommend. You know, this is what I'm trying to get done. And I respect, and I understand, the concerns that the committees have. But we need to be, we need to take care of these business guys, too. We need to tell, you know, one comment that I made to somebody else, you don't like it? Buy him out. If you don't like it, buy him out. But don't be telling him what he can't, he cannot do in his business. He owns that property. He has a right to do what he, within the perimeters of the law, to do what he wants in that business. But we keep holding them and holding them back with specific uses, with all these types of things. When all these guys are trying to do is make some money.
Your point is well-taken, Commissioner. I just, I speak for myself, I want to see my city beautiful, I want to see people driving down the streets and admiring the structures that are there. There are a million places in Brownsville for a used car lot. And, you know, the investors that are coming to fix this car lot and wanting the detail shop, they can go to 100 other places in Brownsville. This particular strip of land is a beautiful piece of property that we should only enhance. We have the Midi District, Cultural District, because we want to enhance that property, not allow these car washes that are closed. No, I don't want those.
I represent a district that, one of the businesses, the major businesses in my area, is auto detail. Now, these auto detail businesses have helped my community. They have given some of these people the opportunity to become a small business. Mr. Baldomero Trevino is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. He is part of the chamber, he is part of the city, he is a contributor to this community. Now, he comes in with the business that he has, and, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't see a problem with there being an auto detail in there, because I think that the businesses go hand in hand. When you take them to a specific on Six, an auto detail and a used car lot is the same. Fine, they were downgraded down to a Four because of what was trying to get done in the district, but they are the same. If we had, if we were back in those times, when it was a Four, an auto detail and a car wash would be a Four. They are the same.
That was before the Cultural District.
And when you take it up to a Six, if you take this used car lot up to a Six, the auto detail is also under the Six. So if it were a Six and a Four, I would understand. But when you take them to a Six, they're both the same.
I don't feel like I'm even playing with a full deck of cards. I mean, we don't even know if the six months has elapsed or not.
If it hasn't lapsed, and that's what I think is critical, if it hasn't lapsed, then Mr. De Los Santos is going to continue to be able to operate the used car lot, okay? And whether Midicultural doesn't like it. I mean, and at that point, it's hard to argue the detail shop versus a used car sells. Now, if the six months has lapsed, again, I'm on both sides here. I don't disagree with either one. I know what we're trying to do out there, but I also respect what Mr. De Los Santos has the right to do out there. And he mentioned that also, there's plenty of other property on Seventh Street that is a heck of a lot more of an eyesore than his lot. Now, would I like, do I like that his lot is across from this brand-new fine art museum? No, I don't. But that's where it is, and he has a right to do that. So personally, I'd like to know the six-month issue. That way, that addresses it. If he is in compliance, he gets to keep selling cars, and I don't see a difference between selling cars and having a detail shop. If he's out of that, then I probably won't support it. But that's important. I don't want to have this issue and then come back again, oh, he is within his right to have the used car, so.
Mayor, without this information, can I move to table?
Sure.
Second.
All right, we're going to move to, actually, we're going to move to continue the public hearing, since we opened it.
That's right.
We'll move to continue the public hearing, Commissioner. Is that all right?
Oh, yes, yes.
All right. Seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item number 11, Public Hearing in Action to Authorize the Issuance of a New Taxicab Permit to Mr. Jesus I. Cavazos on a 2001 Ford Windstar, which will be operating for Valley Taxi Company.
Attorney General, this is a new application for a permit. It would be permit number 66 out of 125 that are authorized by the city ordinance.
So move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner.
Move to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Nettles. Seconded by Commissioner Longoody. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nettles. Seconded by Commissioner Longoody. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commander. Item 12.
Item 12, Consideration in Action to Authorize the Sponsorship of an Application by the Commemorative Air Force for Statewide Transportation Enhancement Program Funds from the Texas Department of Transportation.
Mayor, members of the commission, once again, the commission is being asked to give consideration in action to the sponsorship of a grant application. What that means is, it authorizes the preparation of the grant application and eventual submission through the MPO to TechDOT for consideration.
This does not bind us, in the event that we're successful, to that 20% local match. Our concern, Larry, is that, and I hope they are successful, you know, that we're then going to have to be scrambling to find half a million or a million bucks that we don't have for this project, that we, I mean, it sounds great, gentlemen, don't get me wrong. But right now, we have a lot of commitments.
Understood.
Matter of fact.
There is no contract that is to be executed tonight with.
My whole point, though, is that there's got to be a contingency plan in place. I want them to think positive, that they're going to get this grant, or at least a portion thereof. How are they going to meet that shortfall or that 20% match?
Understood.
I'm not saying that the city won't participate, but, you know, I don't want them coming back saying, okay, well, we need you to do the whole 20%. That, I don't think that that's, you know.
Mayor, I agree with you, I think, but my concern is, Larry, again, we will be obligated, if the grant is approved, at no matter, at any level, 20, we will have a 20% match somehow, some way.
There will be a contract, that's true, there will be a contract that has to be executed with TechDOT in order to implement the project.
From the city of Brownsville.
The city of Brownsville is the sponsor, is going to be a part of that contract, as is the CEF.
Again, we don't want this to get approved, and then saying, well, we're going to get that 20%.
I understand.
So let's have that in place. I mean, I think we need to approve it, but that 20% needs to be addressed immediately.
TechDOT will not approve this grant without that in place.
Well, I understand that, but right now, what you're telling them, what the application's going to say is that the city's, or that there's going to be a local match of 20%.
Right. And based upon the representations that were made to you, that's going to be from a combination of private and public sector funds.
That's right. And at this time, the city is not committing themselves to one penny.
Right.
That's the jux to the matter, right, Mr. Mayor?
Right. Well, I know we're not, but in effect, we kind of are, because let's, we want you to be successful, and whether that's in five months, six months, or a year, you get it, okay, then you're going to know, okay, we're going to need, we've got a commitment from this foundation, from this foundation. And I know it's easier to go out and get that money once you have that commitment. Hey, city, can you come through with 50 grand? Okay, you know, that's going to be a much easier sell for us than a million bucks. But it's a concern that we're addressing you right now, we don't want it after the facts, say, oh, well, we thought the city would pay the million. We're not committing that. But we want to sponsor the project and get moving.
We understand that, and the city is not going to be locked into anything, and we're not going to come back to the city for a million dollars.
All right. This is an action item.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner, and then seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 13.
Item 13, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2006-017 to Approve and Authorize the Service and Assessment Plan for the City of Brownsville Santander Public Improvement District Number One.
Attorney General, City Commission, tonight, we request your approval of Resolution 2006-017 that really would approve the service assessment plan for actually, Terrence Number One. Through this resolution, the plan is attached, which outlines the services to be provided by the, by this assessment. The assessment is basically to cover supplemental services of landscaping, water, landscaping supplies, property and liability insurance, administrative costs. The sum of this assessments would be $30,000. An apportionment of each lot owner, or proposed lot owner, would pay $160 per lot, per year for the first seven years, and would increase to 10% in years eight through 10. Every year, this plan will come before the commission for your approval.
Every year?
Every year. And this plan will begin January 1st, 2006.
Okay, I just got one concern and one comment, and I want something to be made very clear, because we have dealt with this in the past. When you sell to these people, make sure that they are notified, and they know when they are signing this contract, that they will be given these $160 added-on cost. And then when it comes to the city commission, we are just approving something that has been brought on by this contract. Because we have been with that, Ben, we have dealt with the PID.
And I have been.
We have dealt with that, and we end up looking like the bad guy.
I know. Yes, and the representative of the developer and.
And I, like I said, I just want that to be very clear, that when the person purchases property, that they know that this added cost is on there, not because of city commission approval, but because of city commissions, I guess if you would call it endorsement, or, because of the agreement we have within the Terrence.
Now, you bring a valid point. My name's Bill Calderon, I'm here representing Santander, the folks that brought the tax increment reinvestments on to you, which you approved, and also the Public Improvement District, which was created by commission action about two and a half months ago. They, the developer actually has in the contract documents with the builders that they're bringing in to do the building, that the notifications will be provided to title companies and such, so that when the closings occur, everybody's very fully aware. In fact, it's statutorily required that they do that, that they're made aware of the fact that there is an assessment to be levied on the property. And the way this thing is set up, basically, it's a 10-year plan. It rolls every year, so you'll be coming, we'll be coming back every year and reporting the progress, and giving you a status report at that time, and asking you to basically re-update the plan. That's also a statutory requirement. But everybody definitely will be on notice that there's an assessment in force.
This is an action item.
With approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoody. Seconded by Commissioner Nettles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 14.
Item 14, Consideration in Action to Adopt Budget Amendment Resolution Number 2006-021 to Amend the General Fund by $150,000 to Provide Funding for Valley Initiative for Development and Advancement.
Mayor, we're going to request that we table this, so we can work with CDBG and see if we can get some of the funding.
All right. Motion to table by Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 15.
Item 15, Consideration in Action to Authorize an Agreement Between the City of Brownsville and the Cameron County Elections Administrator for the Conduct of the May 13, 2006 Special Municipal Election.
This is agreement that's been handed, presented to us in the handout? All right.
Mayor, my only concern on this particular issue, that I feel that it's a district election, no matter which district it is, there should be a polling place for the people that live in that district, and you know, and there's nothing, there's not one there. So the people of District Two are entitled to a polling place, and they're not going to have one by this particular agreement.
Yeah, and what can we do about that, Estella?
PUB, maybe, the fire station on Old Port Isabel and Price. We have two public buildings there.
Other than the Cameron County Courtes?
Well, if it was in District, in District One, you're covered.
At least we want to have one.
At least one. We can always have this rewritten before you approve it, if you want.
She's never had a polling.
Well, I just think that we ought to, it's, the voting location is referred to in attachment A. We own, we own the fire department, so we don't have to worry about that. PUB, maybe there'll be a problem there.
PUB for early voting, they did tell me that they don't have any privacy, as far as, you know, they have an open area.
There was no privacy on Election Day last week.
Yeah, so they told me if we were satisfied with that, that they didn't have a problem.
We're going to use the same type of little booth.
Yeah, and it's an open hallway type of a thing.
Is there, where's Chief?
Chief.
Excuse me, Chief.
Benny.
I don't mean to bother you or interrupt, but, can you, is there some way, some kind of configuration that we could do at the, at the fire station on OPI?
Yes, sir. I'm sure we can arrange something.
Something, something so that at the, without obviously affecting operations, but there at the, at the office and the entrance, where you've got some, and again, I don't think we're going to have just so many people that it's going to inundate it, but it, and it's only going to be for, what, a 10-day? I forgot what it was.
Two-week period.
Is it two weeks or 10 days?
Oh, 10 business days.
Excuse me, Mayor, Commissioners, we also could use the bay, clean it off well enough so they could do the voting there also.
There's no kind of hazard?
No, we can remove any kind of hazards or anything like that. In fact, that's the way it's done during the election in Central Station, they use one of our bays.
Well, it creates a, I know we need to approve it, Estella, but can we, can we? Would it create a, I know we need to approve it, Estella, but can we, can we approve it with that addition?
I don't know whether, I need to see that they have this put in there.
Look, right now, you, okay, wait a minute, yeah, the spots you have, I didn't, I missed this. The public library is over on the other side of town.
Right.
They're using, we're using the same ones we use all the time.
Maybe it always contested that he didn't have a...
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what they selected, those were the ones...
BISD isn't, is in District Three.
Yeah, but at least that one was close enough.
It's in the boundary, in other words, the boundary is...
I'll put it in the road.
OPI. I think it's about a quarter mile away.
The university, fine, the Christ the King, that's close enough, I mean, it's closer to District Two.
Well, we're actually doing, Mayor, subsidizing all the other elections, because ours is concentrated in District Two. The portal election and the college election being subsidized by the city in this particular case.
Do we need to have all these other early voting spots?
We don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice because we're going together with the other, we're sharing the cost.
Wow.
Who's running the port? BISD dropped out, they're not going until November.
They didn't drop out, they moved back.
Oh, yeah, they moved back. But from sharing the cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If this is the only way we can go, Mayor, I don't mind supporting it, but I think...
Can we, can we, can we do this and then see, well, wait a minute? We'd have to run it ourselves, I see what you're saying.
So, I've inquired about running it ourselves, and you still have to, um...
About the Knights of Columbus.
You still have to rent the auto marks and the optical scanner ballots for the disabled people. We still need to purchase the election kits, we still need to purchase our own ballots, which, there wouldn't be a whole bunch of them, but, you know, you'd need at least a couple of thousand or more. You need to have people to man the stations, at least two per station, and you need to pay them...
Well, we're only talking about one.
One district, yes, but you, you're going to have Election Day polling places, you have seven, and in, if you're going to have early voting, you may want to have several there, or you just want to have one early voting polling place.
Well, that's what we're saying, at least having one in the district.
If that's if we run it ourselves, it would just be one. If we go with this contract, then you have all of these places, and we could try to get one within the district.
That's what I'm saying. We do it this way, and we add, and we add that one location, be it at the fire department or at PUB or at...
Just for argument's sake, and I, and I look at this, and I look at the, the composition of District Two, part of District Two is within District One's boundary. I'm speaking specifically of Morningside Airport.
Yeah.
And I don't see too big of a problem going to Christ the King.
Right.
The other part is by Price, and within that area, and they could go to BISD.
Right.
I do agree, and, you know, when our former colleague used to always argue the fact that he never had one in his voting district.
Maybe, maybe that's why he left, I don't know.
Maybe.
But, uh, between BISD and Christ the King, I see where, you know, probably people could be...
It's, it's, it's covered and it's in the area, certainly.
Yeah.
I guess this, this would have been a good point to have brought up, you know, a month ago or two months ago, not, not tonight. What...
We also have station number eight.
Which is the one on...
What, at the port.
Oh, at the port.
And there's a facility there that can make well for that.
That's a good facility, yes.
Can we approve it, can we approve it with the, with the understanding that if we can get another in-district site? And the easiest one to make is the OPI, I mean, the, the fire station on Old Port Isabel.
Yeah, number six.
Or six. Can we approve it that way? Or not?
You can approve it subject to the inclusion of...
In other words, we're approving it, and if we can get it added on, that's what we would like. If we don't, then next time. Of course, that's what we told David last year.
You can either approve it as it is and hope that they'll change it, or you can approve it subject to the inclusion of a polling place in District Two. And if the polling place is not included, then you will not approve the agreement.
Now, see, I don't want, I don't, I don't think we can do that because of the timeframe that's involved. I think we need to approve it, and if you can get it, great, if you can't, then David will keep telling us, I told you so, so...
I recall in the past that, that we have done that, we have approved it, and then they, we have added an additional polling place afterwards.
All right, well, I think that's what, that's what, I think we're all in agreement, so why don't we approve it with that request, Estella?
Let me make that motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, with the request that you try to get a District Two polling site, preferably at Fire Station Number Six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you.
She hasn't gotten up.
I can hear David right now. I told you guys.
Yeah, you were right, Mayor.
Item number 16, consideration in action to purchase 20 acres of land in El Jardine subdivision, volume four, page 60, Cameron County map records, subject to completion of an environmental report.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, I'm requesting that you approve the purchase of 20 acres of land out of Block 13 and 14 of El Jardine subdivision. This site will be the proposed location for a retention pond. The purchase price is $384,000.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but quick comment, Ben, you know, we've been working on this for quite some time now, and with this, purchase of this land, we'll be able to help fix the drainage problems, you know, Town North area and...
Also the communities downstream.
Minnesota Estates and all the other communities downstream, so it's a real big issue, something we've been working on for a long, long time and badly needed for our constituents.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item number 17, consideration in action to reject bids for the 29th year Community Block, Development Block Grant, Storm Water Improvements at Garden Park.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, at the request of our engineering director, Mr. Laster, and our planning director, Ben Medina, the purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. These bids were opened on March 10th, a total of two bids were received and tabulated. The bids that were received were at about $2.5 million, or some 41% above the engineering estimate of 1.8 million, and that's also the same amount that it was above the proposed budget for the project. The determination has been made by staff as well as a consulting engineer to request consideration to reject these two bids this evening. We will rebid the project, staff is working with consulting engineer to come up with some value engineering methodologies to bring this project back before you within budget.
Some of...
Second. Uh, motion to reject the bid by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Next item.
Item number 18, consideration in action to approve an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of State Highway 48 and FM 511, as well as the installation of a flashing beacon at the intersection of FM 3248 and Sugar Mill Road.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm here tonight for, to discuss the light for 511, 48, a traffic signal. The city cost will be $20,000. Fund is in place, I recommend approval. Also, Sugar Mill, 230, 3248, for a flasher, also has fund in place.
What's a flasher, Robert?
Flasher is a signal that just flashes to warn people next to...
Is there going to be a signal light eventually?
I'm sorry?
Is there going to be a signal light eventually?
Perhaps, yes, but once it gets warranted, when a flasher becomes, it's not warranted for a signal, it's just warranted for a flasher.
I need to ask, hold on, Commissioner, the, Sugar Mill and Public Ecel is a light.
It is correct.
So, you're saying at the other end or entrance to Sugar Mill, you want to put a flasher?
Yes, the state does.
The state does.
A flasher light.[1639.62]